Open meetings law notification adopt the agenda. We can all please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've received no comments from the audience. So move on to four student and staff spotlight, gifts and donations, and it's a donation from the Whittnall Youth Basketball.
Dave Pentec had emailed me. He said the Whittnall Youth Basketball Program had donated a thousand dollars. The president of the basketball program had contacted Dave and said that they wanted to thank the athletic department for working so well with them over the years. So it was just a thank you for our participation.
Okay, thank you to the youth basketball program for the thousand dollar donation.
Very good.
On to five consent agenda. A is approval of June vouchers and vouchers payable. B is approval of May eighteenth and June eighth, twenty twenty school board minutes. C is approval of twenty twenty, twenty one SWSA agreement. D is acceptance of donation from the Whittnall Youth Basketball. And E is approval of personnel recommendations. Would anyone like to remove an item? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve items A, B, C, D, and E. Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. On to six action items. A is textbook adoption, AP Psychology. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. On to B, Employee Handbook. Take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Any questions?
Did we have any, um, questions for you last time or changes that we had brought to board? We did not? Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. On to C, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one preliminary budget. Take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Any questions? Mike, anything you want to add? Any questions?
Yep, go ahead.
So Mike, I apologize because I don't really remember from last time, but can you talk about last time about if there's been anything moved around going forward for things like additional supplies or things like that, anticipating additional costs or whatever the fall looks like?
There's nothing in the budget at this time for that. So that would be a further constraint on the budget should those things start to pop up as we talk this summer.
Okay, thanks.
I realize you just got the information just after today. Was there anything in there? For budgetary reasons? Okay.
Not from any guidance. Again, I'll go to Karen's question of as we work through that guidance, what are the ramifications of what that looks like? Additional staffing, whatever, supplies, things like that that come up. But that's what, that's what the plan here is going to look like.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. On to D, Pupil Transportation Contract Amendment. Take a motion to approve? Second?
Okay.
Okay.
So you saw the latest memo. I did contact legal. We've talked about the contract quite a bit. Really, it's, uh, as I said in the memo before, just to reiterate just in public, it really is just a matter of what sort of risk we want to take on with a particular contract. Legal has said that force majeure could probably be invoked. It could be adjusted, it could be used. Whether we want to then challenge that in a legal way, whether that's even a logistical possibility, whether that does anything for us, and the timing of what that would look like should we invoke that prior to school starting because they don't have drivers, they don't have the buses ready, they don't have their routes, whatever the case may be. It's a, it's a, it's a level of risk that we are, we are taking on. So my role, part of how I see my role as in this district is of course revenue expenditures, maximizing all those things, but it is a risk management as well. That is part of what I do also. And so from a risk managing standpoint, what this does is it takes away that force majeure language. In essence, we are paying for some fixed costs that are occurring over the summer. I think we're going to see a lot of that conversation ramp up, especially after today's guidance. I've already gotten examples from several directors across the area who have started and what their conversations look like with their transportation companies. And I'd like to have those smooth conversations and that smooth transition. So I'm still recommending that we, like the rest of the consortium, pay the fifty percent, which as you saw is approximately eighty-three thousand dollars from April, May, and June, and the force majeure language would be, would be taken out. We did take out the language that is anything for next year, so twenty twenty-one ramifications are out of the contract. And there is an understanding though, as I stated, that there would have to be some sort of discussion that would occur with our transportation company if there are prolonged closures. We don't know that that's the case. It's just an if situation, if there are prolonged closures and they need to do things on their side as far as staffing goes, we'd have to have conversations about what that would look like. So it's the same contract essentially that Franklin agreed to in the consortium in nineteen twenty. So the rest of the consortium has agreed and has signed contracts. Part of being in that partnership in the consortium, I think, is also being a good partner in our business relationship as well. That's all I can say. Sorry, yes, I forgot to do that to an employment budget. Somewhat off topic, but also working in our department right now in business office and going to be, is transitioning to finance manager is Dan Arnold. So he's here tonight to kind of see the extensive conversations that we're having and not only dancers, but so in case you're wondering who's sitting there, that's Dan Arnold. I meant to introduce him during the.
It's not a good sign, Dan.
Yeah, I know.
Careful.
But still within the transportation piece, Olson will be playing a big, big role in that in the fall as well.
Okay, so go around Karen.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand. So are you saying like that this is a one time?
Yes.
Okay. And then? I'm not sure if I've asked this before, how many students take our busing?
Oh, we have over a thousand.
One thousand, okay. Okay, yeah, I'm just interested to hear what everybody else has to say too.
Me too.
Nancy?
Well, you know, I'm not happy about spending the money, but I think that as, kind of like Mike said, as part of the consortium, you, um, you kind of go with the good and you go with the bad. And if you're going to be partners with somebody in the consortium, you kind of have to follow what they're doing as well. So I think it would put us at a big disadvantage for busing in the fall. Sounds like there's going to be school of some sort in the fall, and we're going to need to get the kids here some way, and that's going to come through the buses. So like I said, I don't like to spend the money, but I think that we should.
Right, thank you. Jesse?
If I understand this correctly, all the remaining members of the consortium are all set, they've paid, or they're just waiting on us? And then I know that, you know, that huge report came out today. Is your decision based on everything that's in that report as well in terms of recommendation?
I think what the recommendations are certainly necessitate having conversations with your transportation company throughout the summer. As we, as a local entity decide, obviously within, I don't know if everybody else in the area, but as we decide what that looks like, we need to be having those conversations with our transportation company, making sure that they can meet the needs of what we're looking for. That's all I would say on that. I don't think it's based on anything else. I just know that we have to have a relationship that is pretty tight this summer.
And Greenfield, aside from us, is the majority user of the buses in terms of how many are needed per, per school?
Franklin.
District Franklin?
Franklin has many. Greenfield, of course, does. Greendale is the least.
The least, okay, thank you.
Steven?
You know, as far as this goes, I'm fairly conservative from this point of view. And, you know, I support doing this, knowing that at least we're not paying the whole amount and that we still have to have this contract for another year. You know, and it gives us a place to start with where things are for the fall.
Kevin?
I feel like we got nothing out of this. You know, that's just my opinion. I understand where the other districts went and they kind of acted, I think, a little earlier than they should have. I think we need to have collectively done something together with it. I, I don't like the idea of paying for this. I understand we have to have the relationship, but we didn't get a contract extension. We got nothing other than a threat of we need to, you know, well, you'll need those buses, or maybe we can't have the terminal, and maybe you'll be the last one to get it. I don't like how that went down. I understand busing's tricky, but we have another year on this. I don't like it. That's all I really got to say.
I'm against it for the reasons I spoke earlier, at the last time we spoke about this, but as the leader of our district, I would like to know Lisa's opinions on this.
I don't know, I'm torn both ways. I mean, it's a unique type of consortium. The consortium allows us to, originally allowed us to have a terminal and a location. It's a little bit different than some of the other consortium services that we purchase, like through Carl Perkins, where it's truly each a pie and we're splitting it. We each, in this case, pay our own cost for our own company. It's not like we're splitting the cost of a person, like our career technical education coordinator. So I get the collaboration with the districts and the understanding of that, of how we work together. It's what originally got that there and continues it. And from my understanding, regardless if we say yes or no, that doesn't impact their service at this time. The contract is up again, whether or not that plays a part into it and what they do. So I'm trying to look at it from that perspective of is it, is it, how I typically think of a consortium when districts come together, it's a little bit different in that perspective because we still each pay for our own services in isolation. You know, I'm torn, I listen to, there are, they're listening to all the districts. Some are just clear cut, like absolutely not, we're not paying anything, and some are there. So I, it is, it's hard. There's a lot of things to weigh into it. Also, the legislative piece about it is, you know, it goes either way, right? There are some that's saying, that was the contract, and you had the money, and it was obligated, and you should have paid for whatever the costs are. And I get it that not all businesses are going to share their balance sheet with us and what those overhead costs are. I get that part of it. I also understand that we could get saying, like, you paid for services that weren't delivered on. So part of it is that relationship you have with the business partner and, you know, that you pay for if you feel like you've had that good relationship. I don't know that they've been playing hardball, if you will. I don't know that they've been as responsive in our questions about it or understanding. And again, they probably got caught off guard, like we got caught off guard. And I think we've talked about their history of the need for, when they locked in a price, they already found themselves short on that level because they had to pay a different hourly wage to get employees, and so we're probably already a little bit behind in that. I wish I knew a little bit more about their business model to understand that, to see if it's, what legitimacy there is in that. I do know that other districts are getting different amounts, and so that's the part that makes me wonder, you know, the extent of our size compared to other districts. I think Mike has mentioned before, other districts that use First Student and have decided to either pay nothing and what they're coming back at. I don't, I have not been in personal meetings with them, so I don't have a personal relationship, and that's hard for me then to pass a judgment to know how tight that relationship is with the person who continually changes. Mike usually talks with them and goes to those meetings. I know you don't want to hear that I don't have a strong opinion either way. I still struggle paying something for a service we didn't get. That, I can't, that won't change. That's hard, no matter what I'm doing, because they didn't give us a service. I don't know, if they were caught off guard, like we were caught off guard, and there were some obligations, that they had already put in the pipeline purchases for leases for new buses, I get that part of it. They didn't plan for that either. We also had those expenses. So it's hard for me. Mike's talked with legal. I feel like, you know, legal has provided us as much as we can support. So I, I mean, I don't think there's anything else from legal. It's truly now just the boards feel on, do we feel it's the right thing to do? Where would the community stay as far as relating, you know, was that, did you need to do that to maintain that relationship and bus service? I wish I had a crystal ball to see how well they will be working with us through whatever it is that we need to work through, through bus transportation, because it could be hindsight with saying, well, they didn't help us out at all and weren't very flexible in what we're doing. Or like, wow, they were phenomenal, went above and beyond and made this work. And then, then you'd feel that way. I don't have a crystal ball. So I don't know that I have, there's no right or wrong in this one, and I think that's the tricky part. You have districts who paid, they had it in their contracts, and some are still saying, nope, you're not getting any of it. We each have different fiscal situations.
So Mike, you made a comment, so are other districts, the other three districts, are they working with them now towards next year? Was that the impression I got from that?
We have not had any meetings as a consortium yet. We're kind of waiting for today to see what that looked like. Like I said, today for the first time, I'm starting to see directors who are sharing what they are asking of their bus companies now that today's guidance has come out.
In our consortium or out?
Outside, outside, but also First Student, districts who work with First Student as well.
And what are they asking for?
Oh, it's, it's things like what, what drivers will be wearing, for example, will they be wearing masks? Can we implement seating charts on the buses? Will you do that? What will be posted? Will you be disinfecting after each and every touch point? You know, just those sorts of things right now that are just opening up the conversation. We want to have only two, you know, those sorts of things. And then only as this many particular students at a particular stop, so how will that change routing and where students go to along the route? Those sorts of conversations are starting to happen. And I, I wish I could say, well, there's going to be a relation, I can continue to put forth our needs to them, regardless of whether we vote yes or no tonight. I will advocate for what we need in September. That, that I can tell you.
And there's no way that it's going to cost us less, it's going to cost us a lot more. I mean.
I don't think there would be anything less unless you start, unless we would start looking at a situation where families are going, you know what, I'm not going to bus students, I'm not going to put my kid on the bus. And now we're running at twelve of us, I'm going to look to shorten that up and eliminate buses next year.
And what do they say to that? What do they say to that? If we, because we won't know, we won't know our votes till.
We're not paying for that bus then. That's how it's been every year. They have consistently looked for ways in which to reduce buses. I can tell you that because they don't have the bus fleet. We cannot go more buses next year. There is not the fleet to do that.
Well then, let's look at that, the parents do want their children on the bus, and we have to do multiple start times, all that. How are they going to meet our needs?
I don't know where the buses come from. I don't know. I have no idea. I requested one additional bus this past year. Franklin requested six additional buses this past year. They were unable, and Franklin asked before I did. Franklin got none of the six buses filled, and I didn't get, obviously I didn't get the one. So there, there, the drivers and the buses, I, I don't know how that will work. I don't know. If we would have to go more than that, I don't see how that's at this time possible.
Quinn, that was my question about it, because I had asked Mike that very same question about, you know, this next year, like, what if they don't meet our, meet our demand? Or what if they, are we required to, what if we only need one bus this year or whatever? And we have a fluid enough contract, because I wanted the language to be looked at, that we're not obligated to purchase ten buses if we only need one.
That's never been the case.
So that's why I said I need that language to be looked at. So that was some other follow-up things that I've done since. But I also said, but if they're not meeting our needs right now, but we have this five year contract or whatever we're.
Yeah, we're coming up with a fifth year or a five year contract.
So I think that that's the part of it, that's that, you know, when you did a five, when we did, we did a five-year contract, like, we're with this company, and if they're able to meet our needs or not, that's really in the negotiations piece moving forward about meeting our needs. And that's why this language clearly didn't meet our needs. I mean, they're probably kicking themselves, and I'm guessing that they're going to add language in the next time too, whether or not we want to accept it is a different question.
They will. They absolutely, they've already stated that they are. And, and two is, I did come back on Friday, and for a number of reasons, I said, listen, this is going to be a really tough sell Monday night, if you don't mind that I use that. This is going to be a really tough sell Monday night. And at fifty percent, listen, I get we have these fixed, these fixed costs for a number of reasons, I think we should reduce this down to forty, and here's why. And I listed it all why. And I came back with this consistent answer of we are already on razor thin margins because of these wages, we simply cannot accept less than fifty, and we would not take out the force majeure language. We can't do that. So I want the board, the reason I'm telling you that is I want the board to know, it's not that I'm just going, well, just tell me what, what it is, because I just love this. I, I mean, I'm trying to knock this down and not do it at all. And I, and I think Dr. Olson would, would agree that we are, we, we did not just go along with the consortium on this. We pushed back and we said, listen, we can't next year, if we needed fifteen, twenty buses, which we don't get, but if we needed that, we can't go to First Student and say, listen, we're, we're spending more than we thought, could you reduce the price? We don't have that option for next year, what they're, they're asking of us of this year. And that's what I put out there to the consortium. And the end of the day, the consortium, and, and I'm part of that and agree that it certainly does minimize the risk, that's all I'm stating, is that it minimizes the risk to what the fall could look like, when there are a lot of risks and a lot of variables already out there. But I don't like it just as much as Nancy, Stephen, anybody else. I'm, I'm banking on the, on the fact that there are fixed costs that are out there, and that's what we are paying for during this contractual five-year period.
So twenty twenty-one is our last year of contract?
Yes. So that plays into it, Quinn. I mean, we're going to start negotiations or at least start looking at an RFP relatively quicker to the fall, and this is all pretty fresh on all of our minds.
That's the part of it for me about what about the original contract and providing service wasn't going well, because this has been going on for five years and was it, I don't, you know, I wasn't, like, that hasn't been going well for us all along. And then pandemic comes, and now it just exacerbates that. And so now are we trying to wrap it all up in one situation? That's the part about it, like, we have to look at long-term, have they been meeting our needs all along? Is there language in there that should have been on our end too, that isn't right now, let alone this situation? So are we just trying to, like, get payback for all the times and for the stuff that we haven't been happy for a five-year contract, or is it really about this isolated event? So.
Lisa, have you talked to the other administrators as to why they paid?
Yeah, you know, I think that there was a lot of situations, early on in this, when we had talked about wages and whether we were furloughing people, people sometimes came out of the gate very quickly with decisions, and they maybe sat back and said, oh, maybe we shouldn't have done that so quickly. Maybe there's some of that. We've sort of been holding weight on a lot of things and sort of played it out to see and then tried to come in with a little bit more information, knowing that there wasn't quite the rush that we needed to in some things. So I think to some of them, you know, for Mike, like, they felt like there was a relationship. I don't feel like we have this tight relationship because the person at the top continually changes, like, more than annually. So like, you haven't really developed a relationship right now. Like, I think some companies, we would say that we have a good relationship. Todd would, Todd would tell you with some construction subcontractors, we have good relationships with them. I don't feel like we have this relationship with that company yet. They provided us a service in a five-year contract. I just don't know that it's a relationship type of contract. That's the part that makes me go, oh. So, yeah. Definitely we need to, when we renegotiate and look at that, there's going to be a lot of stuff that we need to be a little bit more aware of. Even had this not happened, there was a lot of stuff that that contract needed to provide.
Thank you. Okay, we can go around again if anybody wants to. Karen? Any follow-up? No, just go, we'll go around with everybody first, it's fine.
Um, okay. So let me make sure I understand this now. So that eighty-three thousand dollar payment is connected to the force majeure language?
The agreement is if we are going to pay for these fixed costs that you're telling us that we, you have, the force majeure language is then gone. In other words, you can't just tell us that you don't have the busing or you don't have the drivers. That's not a thing. Or else, if you do it, you have to tell us that we get that, those dollars back if they don't cure it in ten days, ten calendar days.
If they're in business.
Thank you. I think they'll be in business.
Okay, and then, um, yeah, my only other question was, I think you already covered this, like, in terms of dialing up the service or dialing down the service. And so we know we can't dial it up because there's only so many buses, only so many drivers. But in terms of dialing it down, we have the ability to do that if we find that our demand is not, you know, as high as it was before.
First student has had, correct, first student has demand for buses. And so getting buses has always been an issue. In each of the years that I've been here, they have always asked how can we reduce the number of buses? And I would imagine that this next year, as districts all across the country, and this isn't just our area or just Wisconsin, First Student is national, in every hotspot this fall is going to be different. There could be, the needs, I would imagine, are going to be high in other areas that they could move buses wherever they needed to be. And I think that they would, in the same way they've always acted, reduce buses to whatever our needs would be if that be the case, and that our bill reduces, just like it has the last four years.
Thanks for working on it, Mike. You know, I know it's been a lot, so thank you.
Nancy?
Nothing else.
Jesse?
You spoke about asking for that one bus. How many times have they actually fulfilled our requests in those situations over the course of this contract?
The only other time I needed additional bus was my very first year here, we needed another special education bus, and we, we got that. They have been, as far as being responsive to routes and timeliness of particular pickups and drop-offs, communications, it's been a pretty bumpy, rock, no pun intended. It's been a pretty bumpy relationship in that regard. I would say, you know, I think the additional bus request this past year would have helped a lot of things, and they simply couldn't get it. You know, I, when we found out that maybe there was some imbalance in some of the buses, slight imbalances in some of the routes, it was, well, your turn in looking at the additional, at, at your routes is coming up this summer. And so we do it with the consortium on a four-year cycle. They redo all the routes. And I'm kind of thinking, you got the software, why can't you do that every year? You know, so it's those sorts of things where I've questioned some of their practices. So as Lisa said, it's some of those pieces that you look into the next contract and you go, listen, these are the number of buses that we need. We want you to balance the routes every year or at, at least every other year. And some of those things you just learn as we've gone through, as I've gone through this experience with that Whittnall. So not perfect by any means, if I'm going to answer it shortly then.
Okay, thank you.
Steven? Anything else? Kevin?
Say, can we do a roll call vote on this, please? That's it?
Well, I, what Kevin said earlier about the consortium, I think they failed us. I think they, and. I think they, and then listening to what Lisa said, I think they, they went too fast. And we didn't, we didn't, later, some of them laid their cards on the table before they needed to. And we're in a bad position now because they're saying, well, we're going to service these three and we'll get around to you if you don't pay. So, I'm not real happy with them, that's all.
I'm not comfortable paying it, but I agree that if three of the other districts in our four district consortium are going to be doing it, then we're the oddball. And if, for whatever reason, they close a terminal or, or whatever, I know it's most likely not going to happen. But if something like that were to happen, or if, if they have lower staffing or something along those lines and then we're shorted on buses, I think that could create more problems coming back this fall and us having to find a company to cover for us and whatever. So I agree, we got backed into a difficult position and now we're having to make a decision most of us don't feel comfortable making. But I think if this mitigates the risk the best, then I think we need to do it. All right.
So I have one more question, sorry. And I guess that is, do you feel like we're already in last place because we're the last people talking about this, you know, like you've already, you already kind of know that it's taken a while?
So.
Last place? Come on, sister!
No, I, I get it, I thought about it. I mean, our last communication was cordial. I, I don't know, so, so let's, let's play, let's say we, we paid. And now all of us have paid. Now they come up short. Somebody's going to get the short end of the stick. Somebody is going to have to have that situation cured within 10 calendar days or else they get their dollars back. Can't meet our needs within 10 days and get our dollars back. They'll probably have to make a choice. I doubt that choice is Whitnell. We're paying a, a pretty large amount, I'll just throw it out there. At Greendale at five buses, if I'm First Student, I'm going to take an $18,000 hit versus an $83,000 hit. Right? So we've had other situations where we, where the company has been short on buses and Whitnell has usually been chosen to get the buses in those regards, or the drivers, I should say, typically been drivers. There's been a large Friday out and Lisa kind of tested this where there's been other consortiums, they've gone, did you guys have all your routes going today? Because we didn't. We did, we did. People and our drivers like riding the Whitnell route as well. The times in which we have been shorted, typically they have taken that from the private school route now first, it's kind of been St. Mary's in Hales Corrs Lutheran, which hasn't made the private schools very happy in that regard. But as First Student, they have the right to assignment. And so they have that in there that they choose how to handle shortages at different points. So to answer your question, are we in last place? I, I don't think so. This, this is also that protection, should there not be anything ready to go? $83,000 is a lot for them to just hand back should they not cure it in 10 days.
That helps, thanks.
I think we're the preferred route because we're closest to that terminal.
Maybe.
Probably.
That's great. So, and not, not paying, you know, again, I think they want a service with, they're not going to want buses to sit. Quinn, I think you've made this point, or maybe it's Kevin, the last timers. They don't want their buses to be sitting there either. I mean, it's not like there's no risk on their behalf. If this board would go, no, they're going to try everything they can to get those buses going because they do want the revenues associated with each of those, those pieces. It's really just this balance of, I know I'm throwing a different thing at you right now. It's really just a balance of what is the risk? And that's what legal will say too. I mean, that, that's all legal is, is how much do you want to balance out this risk? Legal reiterated, we are on the low end, besides zero, which districts are deciding zero. When there is a percentage put into place, we are on the low end of that percentage. Should I give on this? We're on the low end, we're on the low end. And legal reiterated that as well.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. All right, then we'll do a roll call vote. Karen?
Fine.
Nancy?
Fine.
Jesse?
Say.
I, yes or no?
No.
No? Stephen?
Yes.
Kevin?
No.
Quinn?
No.
Um, I'll vote yes. So the motion carries four to three.
Let's move on.
All right. On to seven reports, a superintendent's report.
On the heels of that. So I'll take any questions as they come up because I have a lot of topics today. So I'll just sort of look around and sit and see if there's questions. So first of all, just wanted to share about the senior succession. Thank you to all of those of you who attended. I think it was a really great success. Today we posted some pictures from all the businesses who also participated. And so I think that was really great too. We had a chamber board meeting last week and people are, in fact, the dentist who is on the chamber board said that she had patients coming in unsolicited, talking about how well it was and how surprised they were at what that was. And so that was really good to hear that. It just got a lot of talk and I think it was, and because we could get our businesses engaged also with the community, it was a really good event from that. So they were very appreciative for the ask and then also for what they were able to do in return for that. So Logan and I previewed a quick video that we had because we had a videographer there that day. He just sent us a draft of it today. So part of that is we're waiting to see what that looks like on July 25th, which is what we're calling true graduation, the official statement, the declaration that we say that the board has deemed you a graduate. And that will be the virtual or in person. We said we're going to make that decision by July 1st, what that looks like depending upon what gatherings are or are not able to be held. If it is, it most likely will be outside and will be graduates only if we do anything in person. And so that's yet to be seen. We will probably do a survey out to seniors and their parents, first of all. I mean, we've been trying to not hedge something, knowing where the conditions are very fluid in all of this. And so we need to make a decision either way if we're going to do virtual and that would engage, that would involve having student speeches officially declaring the valedictorian salutatorian this year. Some of those things that we didn't have in the picking up your diploma cover piece of it. And so those, and officially reading their name as we would. And so that, that determination we'll make. But we want to know to what extent comfort or even interest maybe our seniors have in, in attempting something in person as compared to virtual. So we'll get that survey out to them. We want to wait until things are constantly changing, what phase we're in, where we are, where people are and all of that. So don't want to do that too early because it's, it's, it's pretty quick. If we do decide to do it outside, we would do it at Falcon Field. Our, our gym, I don't know, is an option because of the cafeteria and some of the stuff there. I, that gets a little bit tricky right now with stuff going on and, and all of that. So we'd have to, there is some setup that, that would come with doing it on Falcon Field too, with being on the turf and all of that, so. School meals, just wanted to announce that over the summer from when we went into, when we, we had the two-week break of spring break and then once we came back and started serving, we've served 15,358 breakfasts and the same number of lunches because when you pick that up, that's, you get both of those there. We also did receive approval, it's been back and forth and back and forth about whether or not we'd be able to serve. And so we will be able to serve, our application was approved through August 30th. We don't meet the, the number of free and reduced lunches to be able to serve a typical summer meal program, but the exception this year with everything going on, and so we, we applied for that and have, have, have been accepted for that to be able to continue to provide. So that survey just went out, I think, to survey our parents about interest, to know how much staff. So we're trying to keep the staff for those who exactly serve rather than overstaffing or understaffing. So we saw the numbers, you know, on a daily basis accelerate at various times as maybe employment became a, a concern or just the word of mouth and our publicizing of that being an option sort of became, got out there a little bit, so. Virtual learning surveys, at this point in time, parent surveys, we have 271 elementary parents that have completed it, 204 middle school parents and 200 high school parents. Now, some of those could have been the same parents that took a different survey, but that's the completed surveys that we have. As far as student surveys, we have 185 elementary. There might be some K4, K5 first grade that are on the parent ones that we can add because we had the parents ask their questions for them. 168 middle school and 197 high school. So we're going to close the parent ones by the end of this week and then start analyzing data so we can have that ready by July 6th when we bring our teachers in for their training to talk about what was the voice of students and parents about virtual learning, what worked for them. Teachers have already done some of that, collecting their thoughts, what worked for them, what didn't work for them. We need to get the voices of parents and students in there collectively. And obviously if we find something that didn't work for all three groups, we're going to not do that. If it worked for all three groups, then that's something we want to make sure that we preserve regardless if we're back face-to-face, virtual or, or switching back and forth. And so it's, it's always interesting, I think, especially listening to student voice. We don't do enough of that. I mean, parents have a perspective from the parent, but to hear it from the learner, even if they're a kindergartner, is, is what they really missed or didn't, didn't enjoy about it and some things that they really liked about it. So we'll, we'll share those out once we have those tabulated and summarized and really see some themes that people started to talk about that.
What kind of questions do we ask the kindergarten, kindergarteners?
What did you like about learning at home? What didn't you like about learning at home?
Yes and no.
And when we come back to school, what are some things you'd like to keep doing?
Very good.
Pretty open-ended. And we wanted it right from the words. It wasn't multiple choice we wanted to hear because you can tease out when they say something, what they really mean by that. A lot of our youngest learners said that they, they didn't miss carpet time because it's really hard for them to sit still when they have to sit on the carpet time with the teacher, so. So that was, I mean, just that, you know, sometimes they have a lot of energy and sometimes just making them be very, like sit here for, like that's hard for them to do. And so their ability to move around a little bit for our youngest ones really came through on their voice. So that was something maybe to keep in mind, right? Regardless if we're virtual or that, like even 20 minutes for a five-year-old to just sit there and have to listen sometimes is, and we have to train that, I get that, but it, but that was just them. I liked learning where I could get up and move around and when I wanted to, when it made sense for them, so. Some interesting student voice on all of that. WIA released their summer guidelines. It's about a 16, 17-page document. I, I shared it with the board, it's available. So as of July 1st, it sort of summarized it by putting low risk, medium risk, high risk in some of those categories. We're meeting Wednesday afternoon to take a look at it here with our athletic trainer, Mike, Todd, a few folks, to be able to say, what does that mean for us here? The biggest thing to, to be aware of is that typically our, our sports have contact days in July and that's what this was really about. And those are practice days for, for sports. And they can't be held against a student, they can't be mandated or, or any of that. And that's really critical. So how we message that, if we do for what sports, when and how and all of that, will be really important that coaches understand that. So if you have a, you know, a, a parent or an athlete that does not feel comfortable doing it, it cannot be held against them if we get to sports seasons and we're actually playing. So this was only for summer practices that are allowed by WIA. It has nothing to do with fall season, winter season or any of that other stuff. It has to do with that. I mean, if you read it, it talks about sanitizing baseballs and all of that other stuff and so, yeah. I mean, there are some sports I think we can think that are easier, like tennis, right? Or that. But you get into stuff like basketball or, or, or like that, that becomes a little bit harder. Obviously no locker rooms, weight rooms, things like that. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that and, and where we are, we'll reach out to others, but we've got to digest it here, even with our facilities, like what we feel comfortable with before we're able to decide. And then we'll probably look at, as most other people do, I know our parents are going to get surveyed to death, but honestly, like you have to ask because we could put together some rules and that may not be what they feel comfortable with. And then you're like, well, that made no sense because nobody wants that anyway. So there will be from our athletes as far as what we look like for that. So that's the WIA piece. I'll pause before I get into reopening stuff. If there's any questions up until this point. So, uh, this morning, I don't know what anybody else expected. I did not have a lot of, uh, hope in what was to be delivered and luckily so. All it is is guidance, there's no directive mandates and, and not that we want that, but I think it left a lot of interpretation. And so this is my editorial, I can do that every once in a while. It, it's, it's very frustrating sitting in this seat and my colleagues would concur as I've been in meetings all day about this, is that nobody is stepping up to own or take leadership in that except for, we're left with no other choice. Every other group or agency is playing hot potato with everything. And it's really frustrating. I don't want mandates, but when you leave it up to local to make every decision, the most frustrating thing I heard today was from WIA that said, and I quote, "It will be up to your local school district how and when and if you participate in athletics this year." And we all said, excuse me? How does that work? Superintendents now are deciding if their district will participate in WIA? Yep, we're, it's local control, total local control. Like we pushed this guy and he started getting, they're like, oh, you need to be having a separate call because you've just upset the entire state. Like that was not, none of us knew that. That's an example of it. DHS, well, every, every group and organization don't want to own any decision. So it's frustrating because, because of that. On top of it, you have uncertainty. Here's the other part I was unaware of when we were on the call this afternoon. School business managers were also asked to join and departments of health across the state. It was probably the largest virtual meeting I've been at. Got close to 800. DPI shared that this is a very fluid document. It will change regularly, at least every two weeks. In fact, they're going to have an update out in two days already from what you saw today. So, that I was unaware of. So I'm letting you all know, if you thought this was going to be that, luckily we've been doing our own planning regardless of this document. And if we're looking for some guidance or some help or some, hey, what do you suggest? It is hands-off from everybody everywhere, so. Lots of frustration, added frustration from the work that we've been doing all along and getting not a lot of help, whether it's been in, what can we do for graduation? What can we do for this? What about instructional minutes? What about, nobody wants to own any decision, which leads us making it and then the public criticizing any one person for not making the decision when the range of decisions that any stakeholders in any district, we all have them, from everybody thinking that this virus is a hoax to have not left their house since March 13th. And, and so trying to serve all of those populations without any guidance from any other organization. And yet legislators wanting to claim that the backbone of the economy restarting is being held on the backs of public schools. So the document, you can read it. It introduced terms that none of us had heard before, physical distancing as a model of learning. None of us had even heard it. They picked some research, they used, we don't even know what that means. They also made some claims in there that employees, if they didn't feel safe, did not have to go to, do not have to report to work. That is inaccurate. Employees can't decide whether or not they feel safe or don't feel like showing up. That's not a thing. Like we've been told that by legal counsel, like that's not a decision that an employee can make. So they've already said, we'll get that out and corrected. They also had this 10 to 1 ratio on something that none of us had heard of before. So I don't, I, I, they said they're going to try it within the next couple of days, send out the corrections already, but every two weeks, there But every two weeks, there will be a new iteration of this document as new information is learned. I think that the hardest part was looking at the models of, like, this four days on and one day off because that seemed to be picked up in the media quite a bit today. My biggest concern with that was the false pretense is that the fifth day was for deep cleaning. That's not a thing. If you've been for four days straight in a facility, the germs from Monday are either dead, or like, you deep clean on one day, like, that's not how that works. Like, you should be doing that daily, and high-touch surfaces should be cleaned more regularly. And parents, if you watched any media today, like, were like, that does not work for families to close, you know, all of a sudden. Great, I'd love to have four days of instruction and a fifth day of PD with teachers. Like, can you imagine that? That would be phenomenal. That's not gonna happen. Public schools play a custodial role in society, and I think we're realizing that. The problem is, is that this book that came out or this guidance that came out did not recognize that. And so, we're in this, in between this stage of, here's all of this stuff in theory that you could do, and the reality and the practicality of it that we're living in, that was not helpful. And then, pressure from legislators about, you've gotta open right now, that's also not helpful because I have no guarantee that you're not gonna pull my budget from me in four months. So, frustrated today? Yeah, I think we all are in my role right now. We're super frustrated because there's not a lot of help coming from it, yet there's a lot of pressure to, it seems like we're the linchpin, making everything coming back together and starting society up again because parents can't go back to work unless they have this guarantee. And we can't have this guarantee until somebody else gives us something that we're going to do. So, it's not that we don't understand that every decision has criticism to it, that's not it. This is a level of uncertainty that continually changes, as we saw that. And then, decisions change right when you do make a decision because new information comes out. So, we base it on what flexibility do we actually need right now? And so, that's where a lot of my meetings this afternoon and considerations were, are what are our asks? If we make the very best decisions with information we have now, what are the asks that we need to have available? Teacher licensing, instructional minute waivers again, transportation waivers. I don't know. We're trying to make a list of what those things are because if we make decisions based on what rules we know today, and then someone out there decides they wanna change the rules without letting us know and any, giving any advance notice, then all of a sudden, all the time you spent planning for that, you have to redo already because they're based on rules that no longer exist. There was a lot on state testing, right? So, the amount of time that we spend dedicated in the school year to state testing, there's a four-week window for the forward test alone that you have to dedicate to testing. We don't know if we'll be in or out or in between, and yet, we have to preserve those four weeks just to do testing. If that's the time we first get back on site, if we've been off again for a while, like, can't somebody sort of see that that's a problem? Nobody wants to touch it. So, there's a lot of things like that, that when you plan and when you put schedules together and all of that stuff, they're dependent upon other things that made them so, right? Instructional minutes, what time kids have to report to school and what time they can leave are all based on the number of instructional hours that we're mandated to have. We have to provide transportation. Teachers have to have certain licenses. They need so many minutes of this and so many minutes of that. Everything is predicated upon all of those rules. And if people are changing those rules constantly, or those rules need to change in order for us to make decisions because of the uncertainty, that's where the challenges come in making that. We are first internal committee, our reopen committee met last Wednesday as a group, just to hear what our professional associations are hearing and where that's coming from. And I'm pulling together our external committee, so we have a parent rep from each of the PTOs on there. I did wanna see what guidance came out as far as who they suggest to have on the committee today to see if there was anything else on there. But I think most districts have started to pull that together. The external committee is, while it may not ever meet physically all at once, it is something to run either sections of our plan by and say, what does this look like? What questions haven't we thought of? What are yours? And so, whatever their role is, so our local health departments and some of those other pieces will be on there. So, we may add some students to that committee. I'm still deciding on that because sometimes a student lens also lets you think about, what about this? And we're like, oh, yeah, what about that? So, we're still finalizing all the external committee. Some districts have given parent surveys. They looped it into their virtual learning. Some haven't, and some wish they wouldn't because some of the questions they ask around PPE, like, that may not even be an option. And so, if you ask parents if they do or don't, is that just to get a temperature where people are? Because if the survey says this and you decide, well, we are going to have it, then they're like, well, people didn't want it. So, it's being very clear on the purpose of your survey, just like the bus transportation. Until people could say, well, what does it look like if I ride the bus? Well, I don't know. Tell us if you're gonna ride the bus, then we'll tell you what it looks like. Same thing would be true. The state with the emergency crisis manager is providing every school, a mask for every student and staff member and infrared thermometers. So, by the end of July, those will be mailed to every public school. So, we have five thousand masks, cloth masks coming, and eleven infrared thermometers for our health rooms. So, that is being provided. So, the decision about can we afford it or where do you get it from, like, that's off the table. Now, it's a local policy, whether or not, if, when, who, where, what, you're having related to that.
And five thousand would support it lasts us a year? A school year?
Yeah, that's one per person.
One per person?
They're cloth masks, so you're supposed to take them home and wash them every night. And no kid will ever lose them because they never, ever come without anything. So, that was the initial supply, or whatever you wanna call it. Some additional information I'm gonna add, and we can then pause, and you can ask all the questions here. So, we had our PAC meeting on Friday. This was before the guidance came out. Some information there. Waukesha County, again, so we have Waukesha County, Washington Ozaki, they are combined as far as their health department, they merged. And so, they sort of meet together. And then, Wauke County and Racine Kenosha. And everybody's got way, way different approaches to this, what's open, what's not open, what rules there are. So, I think in the Waukesha County, one of their phrases that they're using is stay safe to stay open. And so, one of the things that we've all talked about is having a letter to parents that part of this responsibility, if you want us to be open, is part of your behavior is what you do with your children when they're not at school. And so, if they're not safe, when you're, you know, you're having them wherever, that's the likelihood of it bringing, you know, bringing something into school and not letting us stay open is important. There will be contract, contact tracing with cases of this, but schools will not be responsible for doing that, the county will. So, if a student catches it, just like any communicable disease, whooping cough or anything, the county comes in and does the contact tracing. So, that will, and then, they will tell us, they will say, who did that person have contact with and all of that, then contacting the students. One thing that was interesting with that is that, that whole sustained fifteen minutes of contact. So, the interviewing that they do for people, it's not a casual in the hallway contact type of thing. Again, I'm hoping we get more on that, but that's what they told us, that we won't be responsible for contact tracing.
So, reporting of the disease, is that something that the school is now responsible for if one of our students comes up with that?
Yeah, the same we are for any communicable diseases to our public health department. So, it goes to our school nurse. So, when any, so when parents called right now for attendance, if they have something, they are supposed to report it. Our attendance people have to ask the question, oh, they just have a stomach bug, or why are they out? We have, we collect that now. So, if they're like, oh, they've been diagnosed with whooping cough, or if they go to the doctor there, they have to mandatory report back to the school. One case, right now, we'd have to say, who did that kid have contact? Have they not been in with all of the timelines? We have to report it to the health department. Two cases, three cases, and then they decide, again, department, health departments decide whether they close, if it's a classroom, a school. It could be in this case, they might only, so if there's a case, and there will be cases in schools, okay? But if there's a case, it may not be, it might only be three or four kids. It might be a classroom, that those aren't just guarantees. I mean, it could be a whole school if it was a family that all, so there's no guarantee. But they are going to follow the protocols they use for communicable diseases right now, as far as deciding that they're not going to treat it any differently. I was curious about that because there's not a vaccine yet, but there are, there are some things that kids get that are communicable diseases that there aren't vaccines for those also. So, I think that's what they said. Again, that's today as of June twenty-second. And so, part of the advice is that it's sustained contact with somebody for fifteen minutes, not a casual, necessary in the hallway because the question's, where do we have to change all of our hallway traffic to one way and some of that? So, I'm sure that will continue to morph. The CARES Act, so DPI is getting, outside of everything else, they are getting sixteen million dollars. And they are gonna, what they are doing to provide to districts are three things through their sixteen million dollars. Make sure that everybody had access to virtual programming, and that's probably through internet services. You gotta think, we're pretty accessible down in this part of the state. That's not the case in other parts of the state, that internet access was not a viable option for some kids. They're going to be putting together training for teachers to how to do, effectively teach virtually, and then, student mental health. So, their sixteen-million-dollar chunk of CARES that they get is going to be spent on those three things. The governor's dollars that, if you saw, they just announced that, his eighty-nine million, the part that goes to K-12 and the part that goes to higher ed. He announced that last Thursday, I think. The additional dollars from the governor, the federal law requires DPI to tell the governor which districts were impacted more. So, the initial dollars that we get are based on the Title I formula, and that's based on our free and reduced lunch count. So, that'll be allocated out to districts that way. The second chunk of money to K-12, DPI needs to do some data as far as which districts were impacted more. And I don't know what that means. They didn't either as of Friday, but that's because it just came out on Thursday. So, I'm guessing it might be more rural districts as far as not being able to provide it or what that meant. I don't know. So, more to be on that. I'll pause.
Can I ask a question about the local control? So, I know we coordinate with municipalities, and since we covered three different municipalities, if they take different approaches or policies towards how they wanna reopen or how they address that, could that impact our ability to run the district?
It would be, so, the health department still has jurisdiction over schools. It's the one authority. If you watch the state supreme thing, that was, the health department and local has the ability to close schools. That was the one thing that stayed in all of that because they do have that authority. So, if the municipalities did something differently, it really wouldn't impact. It might, depending upon what phase we're in, but that's more of a county-wide plan as far as how many people can gather and all of that. So, I don't see that as being as impactful.
Anybody else have anything?
We will start once, now that we have this, if nothing else, it gave us a table of contents for which we can, so, the table of contents was an important page in the document, that we can start creating sections of things that we can start building plans from. And so, when we meet next in three weeks on July thirteenth, we will have some discussion, we will have some things. Again, this is, it's rapidly moving, so, you know, you may be getting stuff we have that day, like, but conversations where the board needs to weigh in on some of those types of things. Some of it's gonna be dictated by, you know, but I think the question will be on PPE. That seems to be a question right now, masks or no masks? You know, what that looks like, at what age? You know, you all can volunteer to keep four-year-olds masks on if you wanna come and do that, but I think that that's gonna be a challenge for any of us. And to what extent that is, you know? So, there will be some questions that the board needs to weigh in on. Some of it may not be our control. Lisa Elliott and I have a meeting with the Greenfield Public Health Department tomorrow afternoon to start the conversations as we were both in the meeting today, and what does that mean, or where are they thinking right now with some of that? So, again, one of many conversations coming up.
So, you have been planning as much as you planning can plan, right?
Planning to plan, probably, yeah.
When, so, we're in, are we in phase two? So, we can't even have more than fifty people right now, right?
I thought we're getting close to a hundred.
Okay. Give it a hundred. Would that mean a hundred in the building?
Yeah, so, that's where it just all falls apart. And I think that they realize that social distancing is like, not, you can't, like, you just have to stop that conversation. You can't do that. And some of the, and Stephen can pipe in if he wants to about anything about diseases, but some of the things they're saying is that the mask is gonna be more important than, like, trying to keep six feet from it. We just physically will not be able to do that if you are going to have students come back in buildings. That's just not physically possible. So, the social distancing piece looks different at different parts of it. One of the models they've been saying for schools, and if you look at other countries that have reopened, is they are trying to do more of a cohort model, which contains it within the same group of kids rather than, so, these kids are together rather than, right now, they cross over for different subjects and they go here and there and they do that. If you keep these kids together all day, if something happens and one student gets infected, you're only infecting potentially that cohort of kids. So, that's what they're, you know, when we look at scheduling, we may not have, kids might be in a cohort for much longer rather than flipping around. So, that, that's what we're looking at.
How do you do with the electives and?
Yep. So, do you wanna be singing next to somebody else in choir right now? So, music education.
So, how do you keep that cohort together?
Yeah. So, it might be that the music teacher is coming across on the screen, or the art teacher is on there, and they're in the classroom. Elementary, I'm talking right now, and they're delivering art, and the classroom teacher is like, okay, we're doing art in this classroom. While the art teacher teaches it, but you aren't going into the art teacher's classroom right now.
Well, I get it for elementary, but middle school and high school?
Yeah. That, they're all those, we don't, I don't have any of those answers right now, and that's not comfortable because how do you compromise instruction?
So, when, when do we, when do we need to start making these decisions? I mean, when's the drop date?
We said that we would communicate something out to parents by August first, and that really means about what it looks like for your child so you can plan. And we probably will still making decisions after that, like, finally, like, movement of classes and, you know, so, lunch in the high school or middle school where there's, you know, two hundred kids in a cafeteria at once. Is that probably a smart thing? Probably not. What will guidance say by then? I don't know. I mean, kids can't eat with masks on clearly. So, you know, there's, there are different models where, but all, all the models they provided that are some split requires more staff. So, to take, say, you know, take a class of twenty-five and you divide it in half, that requires twice as much staff. You still need supervision there. So, even if you have an aide, an instructional aide watching kids in this classroom while the teacher's here and then they flip, that's still another adult that we don't currently have hired. Like, you can't do the ratios in half without doubling your staff, like, you know, you can do some math sometimes. So, like, that's the challenge of it. And I think that's where parents are, that survey will come when we're at a point about, you know, parents are like, they've gotta come back. I know that you can't socially, like, that's just not a thing, that you're gonna mitigate as much risk, but it is not as, it can't be. There's no way you can do school in person with the way, you know, as tight and some of those things. You just can't. Washing hands, you know, mask wearing if that's the case, or just, you know, when people are coughing and sneezing and just all of the other stuff to mitigate that risk. But physically, to not have kids move from room to room and just sit in a room all day, I don't know that that's possible either. We also know that hopefully, middle schooler and high schoolers can be a little bit more aware of their own personal behaviors and habits than maybe a five-year-old. So, July thirteenth, we will have it on as an agenda topic, and we will have a lot more input and discussion around that. And I'll just continue to get things out as we get it. So, what information we might have by that time. So, lots of meetings that are coming up this week and whatnot. On Wednesday, I will be testifying in the Assembly in Madison. We just finished up with that call, and we'll, I will be doing it virtually. I was gonna drive there, but based on the time, it looks like they have a lot of people, they have organizations lined up and they're not limiting. So, it could be six hours of testimony that we have to sit through before we get to it. So, so, different groups from the rural schools, they wanted specifically superintendents, they did not want lobbyists there. So, they specifically asked for people from districts. So, talked about what that point looks like. Our letter that was written jointly between Greenfield and us got a lot of attention, and I think the points in it were well-taken and laid out. And we're talking points. And so, one of our representative, Whitbers, is on the Assembly Committee, so he will be there. He was not the one that requested the information or sent the email, but he is also on that education committee. So. So that is on Wednesday. So we'll talk about what it is, uh, the story about what it is that we've had to do and what we need in order to move forward and the uncertainty of things. And so I think sometimes just having them hear the stories about what it is, because they're just like, well, everybody went on home, like, you should have saved money. Like, nothing to that, right? Um, you all received a letter that we sent, I sent out to our staff and parents again about the we're all ears, about our listening as we continue to move into equity work. And so it was important to come up with that. So thanks to Logan for that, that naming of that. Any work that we do, we have to first start by listening and not assuming that we understand what anybody else who might be different from us, whether it's they have a disability or not, don't assume that we understand what that is. So any of our work around any topic really will start with listening, whether it's, in this case, we decided with a book, and the book that we have is How to Be an Anti-Racist. And the reason we picked that book, there are several that are out there, is it, it starts out with some definitions. So we're all talking the same thing. Do people even understand what the word race means, um, and some of the pieces that are around that? We did have, I think I had four alumni email me with, if you've seen that standard letter that a lot of graduates are sending, Brookfield, um, both of their high schools had a large contingency of students who graduated in the last few years, send a sort of a petition about demands, as they call it, about having more diverse teachers teach and more diverse in the literacy in the books that they read, that they weren't exposed enough to a diversity within their history classes and literacy and not having enough black authors or whatever that might be. Um, I received three or four of those from students. Most, I think they were all from the class of 2015 and responded, you know, that we are looking at it and that's the work. So they've, they were students here when I was here, but I think it was that, it was, it got the exact same email from all of them. So I think it was the standardized one that was out there. So, um, we have 52 people who've already subscribed to do the community book club, wanted people to know that, you know, if, if it takes a while to get the book, um, it was on backorder, but I think I got mine in three days. So it's not, I think you should be okay if people wanted to do that. So wanted to give enough lead time to that. And last, fun stuff, the construction updates. Um, if you saw the pictures on Friday, and I just went down there today and they took the stone off the outside on the inside of the courtyard now so that's, because that's gonna be covered. So it's even changed since the pictures on Friday. But the whole courtyard, all of the old dirt and everything's been dug up and it's been leveled. So you can now see how that's gonna be, um, used as a, you know, a space that kids will be able to, so it's, it's crazy. It's, it's, um, it's crazy. So we'll do another walkthrough in July, I thought, like a month from the last time. So you can see where we are in there if anybody's interested before a board meeting. But it's moving along, um, probably, so depending upon where we are with people gathering, we'd like to do an open house before school is, um, you know, open, um, for people to come in and take a look at that. Um, and so we'll take, we're expected to be done. We're still waiting for the HVAC part. That still seems to be the bottleneck there, but probably mid to later August and have community come in and take a look at that. So, done.
All right, anybody have any follow-up questions?
Could be on a different topic?
What's that?
Could be on a slightly different topic?
What's the?
Just wanted to, with the letters that went up today about Mr. DeCristo and he couldn't back or anything that went back.
I've not heard anything yet. Um, I know, I, I checked in with, um, Mr. D a while ago and, you know, he had a both well wishes from his staff and obviously some sad comments from some of his staff members at Edgerton. And, yeah, so nothing yet from either parents or staff. Obviously, I asked both of the individuals and people, well wishes for the most part and understood it, so. Yep. And so I will send out something related to that to a, a survey as we've done in the past for parents. Just, it's a, when you hire a new administrator, what traits are you looking for type of thing? And, um, and ask staff the same thing so we can gather that in a survey to get a really, you know, what, what are they looking for in, in a leader? So we'll have that. Um, I'm gonna try to get the position posted tomorrow. So we can move quickly on that with the 4th of July coming up. So we'd like to be open enough so we have a, a decent pool of candidates and then start to look at those so we don't have to wait too long into July before we make a hire. So I'd like to say that on the July 13th board meeting, you'll have a hire to approve, so.
I did have a parent text me and her question was, will Mr. D have input on the new hire?
You know, that, that's a.
Cause he knows the staff so good.
Uh, a little bit, but it gets awkward a little bit when they're actually in on. So it's more behind the scenes, he and I talking and looking at that piece of it or maybe even some of the campaign materials that they provide. But it's often a little awkward to have the person who's had that role actually in the interviewing piece of it. So involved, yes. Part of the interviews, I, I, I don't know on that. He and I haven't talked about that, but we've talked about what that looks like because he does know the staff and the students and what they need. Um, so, yeah.
Anybody else?
Okay.
Thank you for all that.
Um, on to eight, board goals, a legislative advocacy SWSA report.
So we had a meeting this past Tuesday. I, in, it's great that we have them. Uh, where we used to have them, you know, we would sit there and listen. Now I'm, I'm in my truck and I'm taking care of my business. So I man out of the truck and whatever. And, uh, there was a gentleman speaker from UW Madison. It's a, a piece of Madison they have, it's a business. And, and what I got was, and I'm probably way off, but, um, they will come into your district and help you with data, how to, how to work data, how to listen, how to read data, how to, um, that's all I got. But I'm sure it was a lot more than that. And it cost 20 grand and it, I got that.
That, that you should.
If you don't have, right, if you don't have the money, they, they got fundraisers, I heard. Right?
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, and then there was, uh, a lot of discussion about what's going on, obviously. One of the questions was, can you get a, uh, will DPI waive start date? And the answer is no. You'd have to go through the same thing as we did if, if it was normal. And then they wanted, the other question that was a hot topic was the third Friday count? And how is that gonna happen if we are virtual or, or if we're at, if we are doing, um, you know, two days on, two days off, something like that? That third Friday, that is the day that there's only half the kids there. So, um, and then, and then the last thing was, was, uh, it, it, it was the letter that we received from, uh, our legislator and the response that the two Lisas, the superintendent of Greenfield and our superintendent, and, um, Rami, who is our government liaison, uh, came out right out and said that. It was, it was a great response. It was spot on. It was, uh, um, it made people think. And, uh, and I'm, I'm sure that's why we got the two Lisas to come to Madison to talk to the legislators. And, eh, eh, you know, it, it, it just is so, what you just said about, in the DPI report today, where they push it all on us, this is, here's a legislator asking us, what are we doing? And one of, one of the responses was, well, we haven't heard from you about, uh, funding, you know? So, yeah, good luck. So, that's all I, that was, it was, it was, uh, they're always good meetings and, uh, they're full. And, uh, uh, that's all I know. I think we have, we have off for a month, right? Normally we have off July, maybe not this one, this time.
I don't know, it's a big blur, but I, I think you're right. We typically have off.
Yeah. There is ones, there is a SWAC board member meeting scheduled, I think, maybe the last Friday of this month, maybe next Friday. So I'll let you know.
Good. Thank you. Okay. On to nine items for future consideration. Okay. 10 announcements.
Well, last week, we finally had a Greenfield Park and Rec board meeting.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
After several months of not meeting. And, uh, so kind of much to their surprise, they were expecting not to have any summer programs. And all of a sudden now that opened up and now they're having summer programs. So, um, I know they are certainly tearing their hair out too on how to, um, do the summer, um, the kids programs.
Playground, yep.
The athletics and how the cleaning and, and how that is going and in the pools and, and it's kind of crazy. But the, um, Greenfield Recreator is online, will not be mailed out, but it is online. And so you can still go up. They are not running every program that they have in the past, so it's kind of a minimal number. But they still are running programs, so we'll see how it goes.
Thank you. Anybody else announcements?
Yeah, it was, it was, the succession was wonderful.
Oh, yeah.
And I think it's, uh, uh, a real feather in our cap. I, I talked to one of my nephews, uh, he goes to a Lutheran high school in Racine County. And he's like, yeah, they're not having nothing. So, excuse me? Yeah, they said maybe in August. Exactly what he said. And they got 40 kids. They could have, you know, 40 kids plus two parents, they could have whatever they wanted. So, uh, and I, and just, just by the enthusiasm of the, of the, of the kids and the parents and I would say probably what? Half, maybe two-thirds of the vehicles were decorated out, you know? Stuff made up on them. Uh, the kids are all had their gowns on and, uh, I'm very so glad we did that. So thank you, everybody that was involved.
Okay. All right. If nobody else, announcements? Then we'll go to 11, motion to adjourn a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, 1F and 1G to review and consider the findings and conclusions of an investigation and recommendations by legal counsel related to complaint regarding conduct toward individual school district employees.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Karen?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Jessie?
Aye.
Stephen?
Yes.
Kevin?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.[1795.52]